The December ninth, twenty twenty four. Of the whole meeting, should I restart Maggie?
Sure.
Okay. We will call to order the December ninth, twenty twenty four Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So, second.
Moved by Ms. Temple, seconded by Mr. Grabowski, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Item two A, approval of appointment to serve as policy liaison. Per policy B D E as Cow Chair, I move for the board to approve the appointment of Kevin Holland's head to serve as Agenda Liaison for Policy. I call for the question and we will cast our vote.
My apologies, for some reason my password on Board Docs isn't working.
We, you can vote orally and maybe Jacob can help. Sorry about, I don't, I, wait a minute, Trudy, give, you want to tell us what to do? Orally.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You got two.
But is that's not Board Docs? It may not be here, there it is. There you go.
There's no second.
No second is needed.
None, no discussion.
Affirmative, I mean, I haven't set it up yet, but affirmative for Mr. Holland's head.
And the motion passes. Um, I thank Ms. Watley for serving in this position previously, um, before becoming Audit and Finance Chair, and I hope it will be a smooth transition and a sharing of knowledge. Um, on to item, um, two B, approval of appointment to serve as Strategic Education Liaison. Per policy B D E as Cow Chair, I move for the board to approve the appointment of Michelle Lieber to serve as Agenda Liaison for Strategic Education. I call for the question and the casting of votes.
Can I vote yes?
And the motion passes. Um, I thank Mrs. Bailey for having served in this pos- position previously, and am glad that she will continue to advise. Uh, these two new liaisons will chair their categories on the agenda at the January Cow Meeting. We will move on to item three A, Continuous Improvement Plans. Superintendent Huckins.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinney, good evening Board members, and happy birthday to Ms. Watley. Um, we're glad to be here tonight to talk about continuous improvement plans that have been developed um, in collaboration with the State Department of Education and have received preapproval from the State Department of Education um, for this year's submission. Mrs. Roberts and Solange Brewer have done a lot of work alongside Dr. Clamp and our Associate Superintendents to support the uh, growth and development of um, schools that have been designated as needs improvement or unsatisfactory by the State Department of Education. I appreciate several members who got on with us before and asked numerous thoughtful questions about the plans. I'll turn it over to uh, Mrs. Roberts now for an overview and our staff are open to questions that you might have afterwards, Ms. Roberts.
Okay, all right, Maggie, if you're good. So it's required by South Carolina Code fifty-nine eighteen sixteen twenty-five, the South Carolina Department of Education designates schools as underperforming. So underperforming is defined in statute as a school receiving an overall school report card rating of below average or unsatisfactory. So it's important to note that all schools identified as underperforming do complete a continuous improvement plan. This serves as a supplement to their school renewal plan. Designated schools are required to complete certain steps. Um, they notify students' families of their report card status and the strategic actions for improvement, and involve stakeholders in the development of the school's continuous improvement plan. The schools receiving an unsatisfactory rating also convene a public meeting so that they're able to discuss their school's report card rating and strategic plan for improvement. So during the year, the schools implement strategies that are targeted based on their school needs, and they receive high-touch support and progress monitoring through their continuous improvement plans. And that um, is actually done at a, not only continuously throughout the year, but officially at thirty, sixty, ninety days. Um, many of the schools are also served under the umbrella of our Acceleration Schools or Transformation Schools or Title One. Um, but all the schools receive intensive support, no matter. So our local school boards are required to review and approve um, our continuous improvement plans prior to submission of the State Department of Education for final approval. And we've provided those plans for you tonight, and it, well, actually in advance, um, so that you can review and approve.
Oh, Mrs. McKinney, if I may, thank you, Mrs. Roberts, for your overview. Um, Dr. Temple asked a really good question, or several actually, as we reviewed some of these in advance, about um, continuous improvement plans, um, and the designation is such, noting that she would have preferred um, that the plans be, um, to show efforts of continuous pr- improvement over time. And so I want the board to know, as we shared with her, that our efforts are to continuously improve schools. And that work happens on the ground with Dr. Clamp, Dr. Williams, Dr. Swearingen, the associates, Mrs. Haynes, um, through a, a very systematic uh, process, not simply just designated in these plans. And so again, we utilize the state's template for completion, and this comes to you for approval as a formality from the state. And we have received preapproval um, from the State Department. Appreciate your approval tonight, if, if you've had ample chance to review them, but if not, we certainly can wait in January um, to allow for more question and answer.
Are there any other questions besides the one from Dr. Temple?
I have questions.
So, in that plan, there's always room for adjustments, right, as you go along, correct?
Mr. Holland said, that is a great question, absolutely. Continuous improvement plans are just that, um, principals have the opportunity to consistently and constantly evaluate progress and adjust plans based on student needs. Thank you for the question.
Any others?
I guess I'll re-.
Oh.
It's, um.
Roberts.
You answered one of my questions already. Um, I was gonna ask this, the continuous improvement plan include all strategies um, that the school used to improve?
So it may or may not be completely comprehensive, because certainly, um, as we noted earlier, we are continuously working with our schools and identifying areas of need. Um, Ms. Huckins, as, as mentioned previously in board meetings, we're doing some individual sessions too at schools, looking at very specific data and talking about some of the most high-leverage strategies that schools can apply. We also like to make adjustments depending on what data comes back. Like in winter, we're gonna get some additional data, we may make some adjustments. Um, I'm willing to say we will make some adjustments based on some of that data that comes back.
Okay, and you kind of touched on, um, my next question. Who's approving the plans and monitoring the funds and activities at the district level?
So, that's actually multi-tiered. So our, um, our Department of Federal Programs and, um, Ms. Solange Brewer's and the, well, she's right here. Um, she, and, um, we have a, a compliance coordinator who works in our, um, office to do that. But we also work directly with Dr. Clamp and all of the level leaders as a part of that process. So that's in addition to, um, certainly the State Department.
Right. Okay, um, and then, um, Ms. Huckins, or maybe Dr. Clamp, this is kind of to, um, my area. The D twenty-three collaborative, um, did they incorporate the D twenty-three collaborative as a part of their continuous improvement plan and their strategies?
Yes ma'am, some of the strategies outlined in, uh, schools and the D twenty-three feeder pattern encompass some of the work of that D twenty-three collaborative, yes ma'am.
Okay, um, and so, since Esser is gone, then it will be funded through Title Ones?
The schools utilize various funding sources, Mrs. Roberson, to fund various portions of those, yes ma'am. Through Title One, as approved through Mrs. Brewer's office and some of, some in other ways, but yes ma'am.
Okay. And thank you, because I, I said that we don't have to approve this, this is for our knowledge, because it's from the, the state.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the thoughtful questions, Mr. Roberson.
Dr. Temple?
I have one more question. Um, since these plans show thirty, sixty, ninety days going forward, were the, and many of these schools had continuous plans last year. So, in the beginning of the year, did they work on those same goals, or did they adjust them?
I can, I can take care of that one. So, at the conclusion of the plan, it doesn't suggest that the work is finished. So this, that, over the summer and into the fall, the associates and the school principals and the leadership team do a significant data analysis to really develop goals and strategies for the beginning of the year. So launching into August, the schools had and developed, and this in coordination with the associates and, um, through our Office of Accountability, using the data that we have, summative data from last year to develop strategies to launch the year. These plans now give us another touch point for at least the next ninety days to receive feedback and make observations over thirty and sixty and ninety days, to then inform whether the strategies are working or pivot where we need to improve those strategies.
Just one last question, there on this plan, is it a three-year plan or a five-year plan?
Um, this is actual, actually an annual designation of underperforming. So, um, the way you exit is literally you are no longer a below-average or underperforming school the next year, or below-average or unsatisfactory, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the exit.
To the end of this year, when we, that's right, the end of this year, um, once we get our, our fall report card results back in like October of next year, we'll know whether we exited or not. Well, we'll know before, but we can't tell you.
Really quickly following up with Carol's.
Excuse me, let me make sure.
I'm good.
Ms. Jewett?
Following up Carol's, um, question, it, does, does this program include wraparound services and, and?
It does, so the strategies begin to inform who needs to support them. So and again, in creation of those strategies, for example, in mathematics, well, then that begins to inform our Chief Academic Office about support for instructional services, whether that be development of curriculum. And then we'll use metrics to identify what is moving in the right direction or what we may need to pivot.
Thank you.
Mr. Grabowski?
Now that you bring up that wonderful word, matrix, and I know from Carol and I had the same issue when I was looking at all these plans, because some, even though they're there and you can find all the information, it really sometimes didn't look like it was unified, uniform. So, you know, how are we, what measurable goals and benchmarks are included to evaluate these programs? And how are we monitored over, I guess we've monitored over this year, other than once they get designated, that suddenly they're, like Frierson, they're excellent, then they move off. But during the year, is there a uniform monitoring of, of the data that's being analyzed?
So I think it's important that we start with the str- the school renewal plan. So the school renewal plan is actually, has all of their goals, um, and we monitor those, um, consistently. We also, of course, do our monitoring reports, and every time we do something for the district level, we're also looking at that data internally for our schools. Um, in addition, these continuous improvement plans provide these official touch points at thirty, sixty, ninety to make sure that we are monitoring some of those, um, high-leverage, um, items. That's what you find in the, um, plans. But that does not necessarily include every single thing a school is doing for improvement, and it certainly doesn't include everything that we're doing to support them.
But I, I understand, at least, this is a state template that we're working off right now. But you brought up the idea of matrix and analyzing data, I, I, and I know we're good at it, eh, but I just want to make sure that we're uniformed and that, you know, because a lot of this is being done by the schools. And I'm just really curious as to how much input we're having in to make sure that, you know, when the data comes back, it's, it's a uniform.
Yes, sir, the, the uniformity in the analysis would be where the strategies are similar. So just as Ms. Roberts spoke to it, if the strategies in multiple schools to accomplish an improvement in one area were similar, then we would use the same metrics to identify if that's improving. And in some cases, we find improvement at a place that we can then replicate other places. Charleston, we're very fortunate to have a number of schools that we can see opportunities happen for our students and use utilization of staff. We might even identify a lab site that we want students or teachers, excuse me, to be able to experience. But the metrics would be similar where the strategies are similar.
And it's, it's continual, like we shared with Dr. Temple, Mr. Grabowski, it's almost continual assessment of how students are performing, how teachers are responding to that, um, so that we can identify other strategies when things aren't working, because we can't necessarily wait thirty days, or sixty days, or ninety days. And, and Dr. Temple, um, shared a sentiment that I feel right regularly, as I share with Dr. Clamp sometimes, when we, when we meet, that, you know, the, the growth isn't rapid enough, it's not quick, quick, quick enough. So if, if we wait for a, a postmortem analysis, it really is not beneficial. It almost has to be continuous, just, you know, Dr. Williams, for example, w- started a day in a school, unless he's here, he's, might be en route here from his last school visit. And so it's sitting down with principals, looking at benchmark data, and making quick correction cycles to improve student performance. If so, we'll never make the growth that we need to close the gap that we referenced in the last meeting. Thank you.
Any other? So, is there a motion to advance to our December ninth, twenty twenty-four Board Meeting for consideration to approve Continuous Improvement Plan components for submitted school renewal plans, um, for state identified underperforming schools? So moved is the, in the second?
Voice. And I say, yes.
And the motion passes. Um, on to item four, Audit and Finance Committee Report, Ms. Watley.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney. So at the Audit and Finance, uh, we had two action items. The twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight Capital Program, which are Sales Tax Budget Reallocation, and the twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two Capital Program Phase for, um, Sales Tax Budget Reallocation. Um, both of those, uh, let's see, what, for one, the allocations will go for the D four track. Um, and the other will go, uh, to the, um, from all the other schools to go towards the James B. Edwards. Um, and so first of all, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, advance to the regular board meeting the allocations to fund the D four track.
All right, make the motion.
I, I make the motion, does somebody get a second? Okay.
Well, you can make it.
Yeah, it's an action item.
You act on a motion.
So.
Yes ma'am, Ms. Watley, you can just walk through the items here, since the committee made a motion to advance them, you can wait till the regular board meeting to make the motion and vote on it then, but this overview is, I think, what the board needs, what you're.
I thought we always voted to advance it from the Cow. To, from the Cow to the board meeting, yeah. I know, that's what I'm saying, I thought we always voted to advance from the Cow to the regular board meeting. Just from the committee to the, okay. A little bit of grace, this is my first time.
You're, you're, you're doing just fine, thank you, Ms. Watley.
Thank you. Okay, so that, that was the two action items that'll be coming up at the regular board meeting, is the, um, reallocation for the D four track. Um, and then the allocations from the other schools to the James B. Edwards. And then the other item, we had, the, the rest of them were information items. Um, one thing that I would like to point out about the annual financial statement, um, the audit that was, that was done, um, the concerns that, uh, were raised in that audit. We, um, have, Mr. Prentice and I, as policy liaison, started working on policies to, um, tighten up and, and provide some safeguards and guardrails to keep from future abuses, potential abuses. But, um, overall, the audit was good, and, um, nothing really stands out that, um, bring your attention to. And at the regular board meeting, we will have, um, Mr. Ms. Uh, uh, Crycheck. Is that right? Ms. Crycheck.
Close, sob check, you're close.
Sobbing, you're close, sorry. And then, uh, then we also have the, um, Esser Report, which the November report will be covered in January. And then we had the monthly, monthly financial report and the approval of the two hundred and fifty K. And that's it.
Thank you, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Prentice, on the two hundred and fifty K list, item fourteen.
Yes, ma'am.
I've not seen this before, um, is this something new that's gonna, um, happen?
So, in this particular circumstance, um, we've asked that departments that have recurring invoices, um, for services, put in a requisition to get a purchase order. Um, so this is just the process of getting a purchase order issued. In the past, um, they've just paid the invoices on a monthly basis against that budget if they, as they've been received. And so now we're having them put in the P O, so that as the invoice is received, they can receive it against that P O consistently across the system.
So, shouldn't there be, um, another vendor, um, in legal services that would have put in, um, a P O? If it's over two fifty?
There are multiple other vendors that they work with. Um, I'm not sure that all of them would have reached the level of two fifty, or if it would have hit this cycle. Um, but we could provide you a report that breaks down everything that hits that line, if you'd like to see that.
Yeah, because I, I thought I saw another vendor that has already hit two fifty for this cycle. So if we could do that, I would appreciate it. I made a spreadsheet myself, but, um, I would love to balance my sheet against yours.
Yeah, the, these services, um, you know, they're consumed based on billable hours on a monthly basis. And so, they just determine based on what they're anticipating for the year, how much value to put on that purchase order. And so it could be a situation where they initially started out with a lower number, and then they do an increase to it, and when they do an increase to it, then it would hit the two fifty threshold and come to the board's information. Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Moving along, then, we will go, um, to Agenda Item five A, Policy FF Naming Facilities, Ms. Denny.
Um, I, Policy FF, to, um, accommodate some of the board's questions that were asked a few sessions ago, streamline the difference, um, the board's desire to emphasize governance in their policies, and, um, also to offer a standardized committee grouping.
Are there any questions?
Um, yes, I.
If you would, you pull your microphone a little closer, thank you.
Um, yes, I could go first. First of all, again, on policy changes, I'd like to suggest that we number the paragraphs. And, um, in paragraph three, um, the school campuses parentheses grounds is, are we? I, I thought the verbiage there wasn't clear. We're talking about naming schools, then we're talking about naming, um, items on the campus, which could be playgrounds, um, tennis courts, tracks courts. So to me, that's not, that's not clear right there. And then, in the second sentence, um, after living or deceased, um, needs to be a period, and then if needs to be capitalized. And then, um, I also had a question that wasn't clear from this revised policy. Who is actually gonna serve on these committees? Um, because it seemed to me that last time we had, um, uh, the committees, I think we should identify the kinds of people who should be on the, on the, um, committees, constituent boards, school improvement, principals, so on.
And, and that comes up under the admin rule, is that correct?
Yes.
They're listed, Dr. Temple.
Okay, so that's another page, so we didn't get that page, okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Roberson?
Thank you, Ms., I'm a little confused, um, and I think I, could you repeat the rationale for the policy change?
Yes ma'am, very simply put, um, back in October and November, there was a lengthy discussion on data, um, asking for averted clarity to policy. These policy edits aim to offer that clarity.
And was there a committee that put, um, that offered the clarity, or one person?
So, we use the process that we use for all policy provisions.
What's that?
Um, that's when staff presents edits to the policy liaison, policy liaison, and the staff attorney, and we add those edits to the board.
So, Ms. Watley, you, you saw these ahead of time? So, okay, um, here's my, my concern. This is, um, facilities. So, did, did facilities have some input, um, with this right here? Um, is this coming from communications, the rationale? I'm just a little confused. And then part two, the language, I'm not sure which attorney worked on the language, but the language seems to box us in.
Ms. Roberson, are you asking for who all worked on the policy committee? Is it a number of district staff and district attorney, um, um?
Miss Hampton.
Miss Hampton.
The names, I'm just saying that, um, it just seems like, um, it should be a policy committee, like when.
It is a policy committee, it's multiple. That's what I was explaining. That's what I was explaining to you. It was multiple, multiple people, district staff, attorney, myself as policy liaison. It wasn't just one person, it was probably five to ten people.
Was it five to ten people?
On the meeting, yes.
So in fact, this even, this, this even got sent back and then brought back.
So Mrs. Roberson, if I, if I may, there were some questions at a prior board meeting, um, around the naming of facilities. For example, there was some confusion about whether, um, that, there was a trustee, for example, who asserted that, um, both schools and grounds and or related facilities like athletic fields, tennis courts, could only be named for deceased persons. And so, um, Mrs. Denny was tasked with working with Mrs. Hampton and Mrs. Watley and a team of staff members to try to take the questions that were posed either publicly or privately about the policy and make some draft revisions to bring to you all for a first reading. Now, if, if this does not provide the clarity that the board desires for the naming of facilities, we're happy to go back and adjust. Um, we also did the admin rule, Dr. Temple, to try to give some of the nuances, uh, provide some of the nuances related to the, the processes, um, to the board in advance, so you could consider some of those things. And we didn't get so granular, Mrs. Mrs. Roberson, as you note, in the policy to quote, "box the board in." But please give us. But please give us feedback, cuz we're open to revisiting as needed.
So that's what I don't want us, as far as good governance and policy, we can't be reactive to when things happen. Policy is supposed to be in place and we use them. If there's an issue, then we adjust our administrative rules to decide how we are going to move forward. But this right here now seems as though we are changing the policy to say we shall do this. Now we're boxed.
And we're certainly open to, to, to your conversations on the DA's about how that should and should not read. And re, and, and again, to revise that and bring it to you. With one of the main concerns being some of the discussion on the last meeting regarding policy, regarding deceased persons specifically, and whether only deceased persons could be. But I, I understand exactly where you're, you're coming from. There, there seemed to be some sort of general consensus that the policy itself needed some clarification. But we may not have accomplished that and are certainly up to the suggestions from a majority of the board.
Yeah, so what I would like for me as a trustee, and not a member of the policy committee, but as a trustee, I would like to see the questions that were brought up as concerns for the policy. Therefore, and, and provide my input based on the questions that were, that came from the DA's back at whenever, that October or whenever it was. And then I could have.
Excuse me, Ms. Roberson, your time is up. Is there anything new? You want, you want more feedback. Is that correct?
When, when you said there's anything.
Your two minutes was up.
Okay, so do you go around and then I have my second turn?
If, if need be.
Okay, so I'll wait my second turn.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Holland's head.
I, I just want to give a little clarity to this, and, and I don't even mind revisiting some of this. But I think it must have been about eight years ago, six years ago. We visited this when we only named facilities for after deceased individuals. We had a board member at the particular time that the constituent board was a naming committee and named a particular library after a board member. So then the rules got changed. And I think Michael Miller and myself and all were on the board at that particular time. What has, what has been told to me back then, and I think moving forward, some things have changed. The naming committee was always done by the constituent board. The constituent board was the elected official in that particular area that would put together the committee. Somehow, as I heard back in October when I was running, in the particular situation, an outside group got involved in naming the facility and caused a lot of hardship in one particular area. As stewards of the board, we do not need to have that happen again. We don't. So what we need to do is we need to make sure that we move forward and revisit this to make sure that we put a template in place that makes sure that it does not offend anybody and that we can move forward in, in, in a normal fashion.
Thank you. And, and the constituent board is included in the naming committee. Mr. Grabowski?
Yeah, a, a, and really, I think it's just to clarify your concerns, it just is the way we've been doing this. I mean, so the question came up, we, policy reviewed, liaison reviewed it with staff, and now that's coming to the committee. And at the committee of the whole, this is where we, if we've read everything, gotten prepared, we would have our questions for this. And if we had concerns, we'd kick it right back to them. I mean, it wouldn't go any further. So I, I'm just, I was just trying to understand your concern with the process, not exactly with what's changing. So I'll, I'll be interested to hear your, you know, your, your questions. But I mean, this is just a policy that went through the procedures, staff worked with liaison. Liaison presented it like liaison supposed to, and now it's our job to raise our questions.
I don't think that you have a problem with my, with my question about the process. It seems like you all have a problem with my questions. I'm only asking questions.
Oh, no, I, I agree with your question. No, I think, yeah, you, you, I think then that, but I'm just saying, I think your questions at this time are proper.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. I'm just wanna make sure.
No, 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 I'm not questioning your questions. I'm just saying the process for clarification, cuz I don't have any problem with the questions. No, I, I think you're right.
All right, Ms. Roberson?
I will see anyone else. Ms. Huggins, if you would, the questions that came off of the DA's that I'm not, that I wasn't aware of, would you share those questions with me?
Yes, ma'am. We'll work and try to provide that by Friday's board brief. Yes, ma'am.
Could I also get this as well? Just because.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
Historically, I wasn't part of it, so.
Absolutely.
I received the information before and I was like, well, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Not having the basis of why it's all changing is.
Absolutely. We're happy to provide what questions we fielded verbally. And then we got some side questions about the policy. And whereas we seem to understand it, we wanted to make it clear for all, so we'll provide that in the weekly board brief.
And I just wanna say, the, the administrative rule was spot on. It was very clear and very detailed as to how it should.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Execute it.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have some issues with the policy and the language.
Understood. Thank you.
And, and.
Okay, I have a question.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to find out with all the policies that we have changed over this past year or so, when will be, when will we be able to get an updated policy manual?
Thank you.
How soon?
Thank you for that, Mrs. Bailey. We'll have copies available for you by the end of the week. And we can get them out to you if you'd like them for, for the holidays. Just let us know, each of you. If you're a new board member, you have your new policy manual book. But returning board members, it was our goal to get you updated copies to insert. So we can get those to you, Mrs. Bailey.
Anything else, Ms. Bailey? Dr. Temple?
I, I really try to do due diligence on everything. So if we have a policy and then we have administrative rule that goes with it, if we could have all that versus when I go to the agenda, I'm looking at the agenda, I'm not going back always to the board briefs to find another piece. So I expect when the agenda is put out there that I've got the materials. So I really would appreciate the policy. And then if there's administrative rule that goes with the policy, have it all together so we don't miss something.
So Dr. Temple, we, we certainly can do that. We hesitate to do that as a form of best practice because the board does not approve the admin rule. So we could provide it for information and executive content. But I just wanna clarify for you all and the, the public at large why it's not there, simply because it's administrative type task.
I agree, but my question is, you know, obviously could only be answered by the administrative rules, so.
I understand, I understand. Prior meeting about the rules, and so we, we left it out of this one, but we, we certainly can add it back.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Lieber?
Yes.
Um, this is actually to Ms. Robinson. She, if I heard you right, it was about the process, not about the policy itself. What are you suggesting you do not like about the policy presented? So that we can, I can digest whether it's going forward or being reset back.
So it's not like, some of the, the language, it seems to box us in when it says we shall do, we, we shall name a school.
The board shall name.
The board shall name a school.
Recognized.
Before, it was generally the board prefers. So it gives you a little leeway and to, you can or you may not. So I don't know that we want to box ourselves in. And I think that's something for discussion for the board. The, the committee is making a recommendation to us. And as a board, we now need to discuss it to see what's best. So it was presented as shall. And so I'm saying, oh, this sounds like it's boxing us in. Let's talk about that.
Mrs. Roberson, thank you for that. I appreciate the question, Mrs. Lieber. Is that, is that your primary concern based on what you see here, Ms. Roberson? Or do you have?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Grabowski?
And I think we had in past in working as a board, and I think because we have a COW meeting and now we have a board meeting. And I thought we had taken the position that we wouldn't vote on actions that came up.
That's correct.
Because we just don't have the time. Ms. Roberson brings up some good points, and so.
Nor do you have time for public input on this ma, on this matter.
This one, so there's no general action.
On this ma, that's correct.
So I am thinking logistically, since there is a motion on the agenda, we just vote it down.
Yes, yes.
To send it back.
Yes, yes, ma'am. You certainly.
Can I, can I?
Or, or we can.
Or the motion. Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Um, exactly what is, I, I, I'm still not clear exactly what the problem is, why we would vote it down.
I, I think, I think it's more of a procedural that we had agreed that we wouldn't have a COW, when we have the COW and.
On the same day.
On the same day, that we wouldn't take actions.
So we could vote to advance it to the next, the January board meeting, not this.
We could.
We could. That, that. Never voted to codify that. We just talked about it as good practice.
Right, good practice.
But, and I'm, you know, this is, this, at least the second time this has come forward to you. Ms. Denny, is this the first time the board has actually seen this?
It's the first time.
Oh, okay, okay. That, see, I, I, I've looked at it now. This is like my third time, so.
And you've seen it a lot. I've seen it a lot.
Well, then perhaps the motion should be to advance to the January COW meeting policy FF for naming facilities.
COW meeting or for the first reading?
Well, I'm thinking, you tell me. It seems to me like there needs to be more, there needs to be work by Mr. Holland's head in the committee and come back for discussion at a COW meeting and then to a board meeting. Is that procedure correct?
I'm still not sure why, but whatever.
Because there may be some rewording done. In order for.
That's what happens between first and second reading. Generally. I, I, I still not clear exactly what the problem with the wording is.
Well, half the board is new. So if there was a first reading, we, I didn't get a first read. This is my first reading.
This is, this is how the process begins. It comes out of committee to the committee of the whole. And then we take a vote whether or not to advance it to the regular board meeting. And that's when it gets its first reading. Is that the regular board meeting? Usually, usually with the committee of the whole, we, we go over it. We do it before the meeting, we go over it. And so by the time we come to do business, you, you have, that's what, that's what I'm saying. I, I haven't seen anything specific, like for example, grammatical errors or, or words, change this word to that word, or I feel like this needs to be inserted or that taken out. That's usually what we do now. And that's what I'm saying is I haven't heard anything like that. So I don't know why we would kick it back to committee.
But we have.
I, I don't know what, exactly what the committee is supposed to do.
But for the new members, in the past two years, we've agreed, whether it's policy or not, we've agreed that whenever we have a COW meeting and a board meeting on the same day, that something new that comes up, we don't go straight to the board meeting and reading. So waiting, yeah, to moving it on. Yeah, we moved to, yeah, to January. That's the only reason, because, yeah, I don't know if we'd move it to COW.
Move it to the regular board meeting for January.
For me, or Ms. Would, would you not agree with that? We would move it to the next board meeting. We don't move it to COW.
Discuss it in the board meeting, in the public board meeting?
We can.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's what it was. We would just move it to the next board meeting. We just wouldn't vote on it because they have to respond. Questions were raised. They have to respond to the questions. And then when you would come to the board meeting, you could debate yes or no. So that's why, since there's no time, we normally didn't do it.
Right.
So I will entertain a motion for item five A.
I'll make a motion.
If you have a concern, can you get me something in writing so I can address it with staff? So we won't have to go through all this again? Thank you.
Excellent. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to, I move that we move item five A, policy FF to the January board meeting for its first reading.
I'll second.
And I will say yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. And the motion passes. For closing items, the upcoming meetings, January seventh for audit and finance. I will bring to the public and public attention that January eighth for committee of the whole and January twenty second for the board of trustees meetings are not on Mondays due to holidays. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
Go move.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
And we will return at five fifteen? Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to call the December ninth, two thousand twenty-four Board of Trustees meeting to order. Good evening. First item up for discussion or action is like to take a moment of silence as we reflect on the safety of our students, our staff, and all our parents in this holiday season coming up. And with that, I ask you all please stand. Mr. Hollings, would you lead us in the plauditions?
(inaudible) A pledge of allegiance to the body of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom of the world.
On to item one C, which is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as printed, published?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No one against? The agenda is approved as presented. Onto item one D, which is the approval of the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four Board Minutes Meetings. They've been published. Does anybody have any discussion regarding any changes that may be made? Hearing none. All in favor, the minutes is published? Say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved as published. Onto item two A, special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Gabowski. We'll turn it over to Ms. Denny, who's got a precious little baby right there.
Is this your great-grand?
Me, please.
Okay.
Do you want to read your great-grand's recognition with me? Wait right there.
We have two very special D, D four, constituent district four trustees here, and we'd like to recognize them, give them a chance to come forward.
And you need to go out front and get your picture taken, but I sure am loving that. You better stop, Mrs. Denny. You got a full-time job. Give me that baby.
Oh, the baby is catchy. That means you're gonna have a child.
Those days are long gone.
Speak for yourself, sister.
Our constituent boards serve Charleston County School District as elected officials, and they support the work of the district by hearing student discipline cases, defining school attendance zones, and overseeing student transfer decisions. They also provide yearly reports to the Board of Trustees. Today, we would like to publicly acknowledge and thank two very special outgoing constituent district four board members who have devoted years of diligent service to the district and its students. Ms. File and Mr. Garnett?
File.
Ms. File. Ms. File has dedicated over thirty years, over thirty years of service to Charleston County School District. And Mr. Garnett has dedicated twenty years of service to CCSD. Trustees, if y'all join us for a photo, we'll do the entire group first, and then we'll do family groups separated.
You are so good. Look at him. Tell him about it. Is she good? Ma'am, I don't have time for the three I got.
We're sorry. We can just see what individual right there. Perfect. Thank you. Okay.
I was shocked. So, you know.
That is so good. Ms. File still substitutes at the Military Magnet. Isn't that amazing? She's in her ninth decade and with heels, looking like a million dollars. Yes, ma'am. So we are, we just, we just shared that you were still substituting, Ms. File, out at the Military Magnet. I don't, I don't think she could hear me. We just, we just shared that you still substitute and serve our children out in the middle schools. Isn't that something? Looking just like you look right now, too, like a million dollars. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your service. We're grateful. Yes, ma'am. Ninety-six. Listen, I just told him you were in your ninth decade. You didn't have to go there and tell him you were ninety-six. We are blessed. We are blessed to have you. Yes, ma'am. Ninety-six and heels. Thank you, Mr. Gabowski.
Excellent. We will now move on to item three A, which is public comment. According to our policy, seeing as we only have one speaker tonight, we will allocate the full two minutes to our one speaker. Ms. Lovely, Sean Lovely, or Sean Lovely, if you would approach, state your name, and you have the floor.
My name is Sean Lovely. I was here last time, but I wanted to talk today about year round school. There was some news stories put out in late October regarding year round school and getting consensus about what parents' feelings were about it. There was a huge response on both platforms, one being Facebook, one being either Live Five News or WCIV. I don't exactly remember which one. But coming from being a student of year-round public schools, I saw a benefit to it, and I'd like to explore it more as a CCSD initiative to see if that would be something to be possibly be a, a asset to CCSD. There was a huge response. That was a very positive response. And I, in back in May, I'd spoken to a leader of the year-round public schools in Bardstown, Kentucky, to try to get a feeling for what he did to initiate his own program. I wasn't able to go ahead and really connect with him, but I would like to go ahead and do so more so, if that's possible. He was very receptive to speaking to us, and I'd like to go ahead and just mention here what some of the positives are. Some of the pros are reduced learning loss, avoiding gaps in learning because there's such a short break for summer. There's less learning loss, fewer dropout rates. See here, in 2018, the dropout rates were reduced by two percent in, in the schools that did have year-round schools. More tutoring was available for year-round students, and there was more enrichment education. Would you like me to continue? Or do you want me to?
Keep going.
Okay. Some of the cons, there are cons, fewer job opportunities for older students, fewer family vacation opportunities, interference with extracurricular activities, interference with arranging childcare. There's possibly an increased teacher turnover and higher operating costs. But I still would like to explore it as a possibility, and hopefully we can connect with the board to do so. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your extended amount of time. Take care and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Ms. Huggins, do you have anything you'd like to say, or do you want to defer?
We appreciate Ms. Lovely's comments. Mr. Gabowski, a modified calendar is something that our team looks at when it examines annually calendar options, and so we'll take these comments into consideration as we continue to work with stakeholders. Thank you.
Onto item three B. We had some additional public comments submitted electronically, and they've been summarized and provided to the board. Summary notes, generally, we had one comment on district goals, monitoring D nine, D ten, D twenty-three start times. We had one fight for education, one CCSD middle and high school rowing. And I'll ask the board members if that ever becomes an issue, just direct it to superintendent, if you have any questions on that one. And one of a personal concern, once again. So those were the public comments.
One question.
Yes, Ms. Wild.
Ms. Huggins, are you able to see the online public comments?
Yes, ma'am. I have a copy of them right here.
You saw that, that last?
I did. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. So we will go on to item four, which is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Gabowski. Thank you, trustees. Tonight superintendent's report actually includes the monitoring report for tonight, which is a focus on our acceleration schools. If you recall at our last trustees meeting, we talked more about the transformation schools led by Mrs. Quinetta White and Dr. Jen Swearingen. And tonight, we want to celebrate the work and share with you transparently what's going on in our acceleration schools led by Mrs. Jackie Haynes, who is here with us this evening. We have several principals and leaders of the acceleration zone with us. We have Ms. Kaylee Jones, if you'll stand to be recognized, Kaylee, Mr. Jay Williams, I see him back there, Jayonte, Mrs. Monica Smalls, the proud principal at Shakora Elementary School. I think we have Mrs. Melissa Brewbaker, the principal of North Charleston Elementary, and Dr. Amber Sains, the principal at Mitchell Elementary. We want to thank them for being here with us tonight and giving their time. And I really want to publicly acknowledge the outstanding work and leadership of Jackie Haynes, our associate superintendent, who has done exceptional job casting a vision for these schools that were once on that list that we talked about earlier, Dr. Temple, that needs improvement, unsatisfactory list, that had continuous improvement plans and still do. Maggie will go to the first slide. Mrs. Haynes has built a culture, a turnaround with these schools, focused on these four pillars. One, exceptional leadership. The three ladies in the room tonight are exceptional leaders. Their leadership has made it possible for students to achieve at higher levels. Two, talent development by building in professional development for teachers, recruitment retention efforts to capture the best in our most high need schools, instructional infrastructure focusing on teaching and learning, which we're really proud is led in partnership by Mrs. Simmons to my right, Dr. Clamp to my left, and climate culture through community partnerships, well-being and wraparound supports. Mrs. Haynes has made a priority, and we're going to hear from her in just a moment. We've taken tonight's opportunity to spotlight the acceleration schools and their efforts trying to capitalize on those things that they believe have been the highest leverage in helping students achieve at greater levels. So Maggie, we'll show that spotlight now.
If I could summarize acceleration schools in a word or phrase, that phrase is we will excel.
Collaborative.
Supportive.
High expectations for all.
We get the opportunity once a month to go to either a coaches' meeting or shared learning, and we're able to go into classrooms and see all the work that's happening like throughout our other accelerated schools, and we're able to collaborate with each other. That's unique for us.
The importance acceleration schools places on the coaches, not just having us here, but the investment they make in developing us into being the best we can at our craft so we can help teachers and students is one of the best opportunities I've had working for them.
What has been amazing about the teachers in acceleration schools, when we've offered professional development, they are there. We have over a hundred-plus teachers, and when we're looking at curriculum and when we're learning about new curriculum, they are present. We have a playbook that is given out at the start of the school year for us to kind of use as a guide. That assists us with scheduling, content, how we're going to departmentalize. It really assists with the planning process. We have tie systems in place when it comes to our behavior. We have a behavior specialist in the building, like a climate coach, ensuring that our students get the social-emotional support that they need, as well as monitoring their behaviors and getting to the root cause.
I think that our teachers are more confident in what they're teaching. We have spent a lot of time in PLCs really structuring a system where they're able to lead it themselves, and they are truly a part of the work. They're taking ownership for their students and their data.
I think we work much better together as a building, teachers across grade levels, all the wraparound supports we now have in place for students, ensuring
all the wraparound supports we now have in place for students, ensuring they get what they need. They've really helped just tighten everything, put systems in place that makes it all work better.
We see definitely more engagement. We see improved test scores. We see more students getting into our gifted programs.
If you're here and you're working in our schools, all of our staff has a growth mindset. We all know that we want to improve and be our best to help students.
We want the schools in the community to be excellent and good. So the goal is to move them there, and then they continue to maintain over the years. And that works with the district offering that support, being there for the schools, and continuing to have high expectations for all schools.
I think the last thing you heard Mrs. Haynes say in that piece is mindset. And mindset and believing that all kids can is really the key to school turnaround. And Jackie and her team of principals and leaders here at the district have created a mindset where all children can. And you'll see on the next slide here how over time, whereas these schools still, Dr. Temple, aren't where we want them to be, they have made tremendous improvement over the course of the last three years, improving in their state designation. Again, South Carolina School Report Card is only one measure of school success, but you'll see Shakora rates average. Mitchell came from a history of unsatisfactory to below average. Hunley Park is good and maintained a good average. Five of these 10 schools, you'll see half of them increased a rating again this year, and the others all maintained. Stono Park maintaining average, Goodwin maintaining, Morningside maintaining, North Charleston Elementary crossing that threshold into good. So we're really proud of the success that these schools have been able to make. Again, with a focus, as was demonstrated in that video, on turnaround efforts. Really focused on thirty, sixty, ninety-day plans, changing the environment, teaching and learning. The next slide will show you very quickly, because I want you to be able to hear from Mrs. Haynes, how placement levels have changed from spring to spring, from year twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-four. You'll see an increase in students, but more importantly, an increase in numbers achieving mid or above grade level and a decrease, again, not as large of a decrease as we'd like in those red zones, but still a decrease over the course of three years in students reading below grade level. Likewise, you'll see in math, a change of up to 11% tall points from twenty-one to twenty-four in math, with more students at or above grade level and less students behind in math. Again, I think this is a testament to a strategic vision of school-based leaders and teachers who are committed to teaching every day, bell-to-bell, and believing that all children can. My last slide here will be the how. How are we doing this? And I want you to really hear from Jackie on her experiences working with these schools over the course of the last several years. I think it's a compliment of working with Michelle in the academic area to focus on coaching. You know, that's a district-wide goal this year, to really streamline our coaching efforts versus having a hodgepodge of things going across the system. A lot of support from Jackie and Jay and Kaylee in the back. Dr. Clamp and I were just talking last week about how often Kaylee and Jay are in classrooms coaching teachers and working with principals. Classroom walkthroughs done by these principals as instructional leaders. Those of you who have served in schools before know the importance of leaders who have instruction at the forefront of their mindset and are coaching teachers and other folks in the school towards high effective instruction. That ninety-day plan monitoring, going back to continuous improvement efforts and making decisions in real time based on data. So not waiting thirty days. I've known Jackie to go into classrooms and meet the next day and say, hey, we got to do something about what we saw. So Jackie doesn't let a lot of grass grow under her feet when she's watching people teach and she's coaching leaders lead and giving feedback on how to continuously improve efforts. And so as we continue to monitor the work in the acceleration zone, I want to thank Jackie for her leadership and ask her to talk a little bit about the successes that she's experienced and what's next for this great zone. Jackie?
Thank you, Superintendent Huggins, and thank you Chair Grabowski, Vice Chair McKinney, and to all the school board members. And thank you, Anita. No, grass does not grow under my feet. In fact, Sixty Minutes, if you watched last night, amazing programs. All my principals already know about it, and we all know how much it costs, and we want it. So we will send that episode to you after this meeting. But I do want to say, if they could stand, my principals and my team, they are amazing, amazing people. And they don't know it yet, but they're coming up to speak. So this is what I want to say. I know, Anita, I don't have a lot of time, but I have the mic, so. I'm so proud that CCSD believed that we needed to create conditions that enable and inspire teachers and students to achieve their full potential. Our purpose in coming here four, five years ago from the board was to disrupt what was not working. And we have disrupted it, and it is working. And historically, we've had schools that were not performing, and we had to consider a redesign in how to support those schools. So we adopted the model that has been tested and proven and looked at the four areas of turnaround leadership, talent development, instructional, transformation, and culture. So years of unsatisfactory at schools like Shakora, Mitchell, Pepper Hill, that was happening. And CCSD did not want that any longer. So we adopted the process. I know that we believe that education is a great equalizer to level the playing field for all students. And we don't want to look at a zip code and determine what type of education any student receives. We want them all to have that same quality of education. So we set out on a mission. And I'm proud to say that looking at those four levels, lovers of transforming schools, I have to say, when I was hired, I have to give credit to Michelle and Dr. Williams because they hired some super principals. It was getting, moving principals that were not moving schools. So when I walked in, it was pretty easy. We had some great principals. But then we had to put that work into practice. So we needed to increase the number of highly effective leaders in acceleration schools, develop the capacity of the principals and the assistant principals. All assistant principals in acceleration schools are responsible for improving math, and Jayonte works with them closely, designing and implementing a leadership pipeline within acceleration schools. Within our schools, we have promoted teachers to assistant principals, and some of our assistant principals are not principals in acceleration schools. And one that went to excellent this year, that Transformation School wants to claim, but I claim her. But she did move, what was it? Frierson, from unsatisfactory to excellent, which is amazing. And we want to empower principals to be innovative leaders. Every one of these principals have been innovative leaders. When she talked about the playbook, the playbook are the systems and structures. But we want our principals to think outside of the box. Any way to get it done, let's think about that. And we wanted to ensure leaders use data systematically to inform decision-making. So we needed help with data, and we were able to form a partnership with Harvard to have a data specialist. Buffy cannot do everything. Buffy needs more people in her department. But the data strategist was able to go into schools, work with the principals on how to use data, how to read data, and to also work with the teachers on how they were using data. We had her for two years, and that was amazing. So now I would like to have Kaylee and Jay, I think they were going to look at the data to come up, and they're coming up now. And we have our strategic plan here. We walked in the door with a plan, and I can say every check, everything on this plan has been done. So if we go back to the slide, I think Kaylee is going to share how we coach, why we coach, and the impact that has had on our teachers and principals in acceleration schools.
As they come up, I want to highlight something that Ms. Haynes said. We really use this model when Dr. Swearingen, Quinetta, and I worked together to create the Transformation Zone this year. So, or last year. So the highest leverage strategies that we've implemented in the acceleration zone, Jackie has coached Quinetta to replicate some of those practices. And we're seeing a return on that investment in other places and the things that maybe didn't work so well, we didn't utilize. But Kaylee, Jay, you want to talk a little bit about data? Take it away.
Or coaching.
Or coaching.
Maybe you get both.
They're connected.
So we're all over the place with, like, just like coaches, multi-faceted people. So as we mentioned before with our reading, as we said, we continue to see that growth. We see that does not meet continue to decrease and our meets increase. The exciting thing is we're currently doing walkthroughs right now with all of our schools and looking at the instruction that's going on, implementing the CKLA skills and everything like that. We continue to see that growth. The instruction is there. The phonics instruction has really shored up and just being very explicit. So we're going to see growth in that. When we talk about our coaching, when we do our walkthroughs and we do our data, our coaches will go in and videotape the teachers and then have a coaching conversation with them, looking at that current reality. And coaching in the past, when I taught in CCSD, it was a post-it that said, good job, maybe do this. We have changed that mindset, as Dr. Lynch said, that our teachers are now being videotaped. They're watching the videotapes separately, then coming back and having a solid discussion about what they see needs to be improved. And then they set up specific coaching cycles with that teacher about what do you need from me? How can I support you? Jay and I do the same thing. We get videotaped, and then we get coached like that also. So we try to model the model, the importance of we're always growing. It doesn't matter what you're doing or where you are. We do our shared learning, which focuses in on specific indicators within our instruction. So we're not trying to do all the things. We're trying to be very intentional about how they can coach their teachers or their schools with specific targeted feedback based on a walkthrough tool that we unpack during our shared learning. And we do it with math and ELA.
Thank you. Okay. So if we could go back to one of the slides that has the schools that moved, if we could just go back to that slide, please. One more. There we go. I want to call attention to those numbers. And I know you only have the numbers there, but I want you to think, when I call out these numbers, these schools, when we started, we had three unsatisfactory and seven below average. Now we have zero, one school, but I want to explain that. But every student is still at that school. The population has not changed. The students have not changed. However, more students are enrolling, and we know that a lot of those students are MLL students, but they're still able to maintain their scores. That's important. That says a lot about the leadership. So Shakora went from, I'm going to give you a 2019 score to where they are now. Shakora, their average, they were thirty-seven. Now they're forty-four. Mitchell was nineteen. Now they're forty. Two points from average this year. They will, they'll be average, if not good, next year. Hunley Park went from thirty-nine to fifty-six, two points from excellent. Stono Park went from thirty-four to forty-four. Pepper Hill went from thirty-five to forty-six. North Charleston, forty-one to fifty-three, three or four points from excellent. Goodwin from thirty-one to forty-five, Morningside from thirty-five to thirty-nine, and Simmons-Pinkney went up, and Burke is on there, but we had really good growth with Burke, especially in the Algebra I area and passing in the U.S. history. So we just need to continue to work on that graduation rate. And I would like for both of my principals to come up. They don't know what they're going to say yet. But there was a question that you asked regarding the school improvement plans that Buffy talked about. They have a ninety-day plan. That ninety-day plan is more granular, and it feeds into from that school improvement plan. So with that ninety-day plan, we do instructional learning walks with that ninety-day plan. It's like their little Bible, and when we come in to do that walk, we look at their plan. They have created look-for's. We look for that. If they're doing it, great. If they're not, how can we help you? How can we support you? And that's how we've seen the growth. So I would like for both of them, as they come forward. Yeah, both of you. Oh. Okay, Monica told me she was not going to talk. Okay. Well, Melissa's going to talk, and Amber, Dr. Sains, is going to talk about how they use this ninety-day plan. And I really want Amber to talk because she has just two points to go. Going from nineteen to forty is tremendous.
So I'll just share real quickly that this week, we are actually doing our deep data dives. Thanks to the district who provided those planning days. Today, we had our first one with our fifth grade, and that went extremely well. So looking at all of our data from last week, our iReady data, KRA data, and our FastBridge, making sure that we know exactly what our next steps are. So taking the first semester ninety-day plan, highlighting and making sure that we have completed all those action steps and made adjustments along the way. And now looking to see where have we excelled? What are the gaps that we still have remaining, and how are we going to fill those? So we made some decisions today based on the data we got last week from iReady, and we now have five weeks of win plans, which is what I need, that forty-five minutes of filling those gaps. We have five weeks of those plans made for every student, as well as reassuring what we're doing in tier one. And those steps are built into our next ninety-day plan, making small action steps that will follow, and we'll redo that process next summer. So that's one of the differences. It is a living document that we adjust and modify all the time, but specifically at every ninety-day period.
Okay, good evening. Thank you. I do want to say, Ms. Haynes, she means it when she says the walkthroughs. I taught for a little bit last year, and I looked up and Ms. Haynes was in my classroom when I was teaching, doing a walkthrough on me. So it is just the work we do all the time with the ninety-day plan. You know, we were talking in our PLCs a couple of weeks ago, and we were just, this is just what we do now. And I think that is so powerful. The ninety-day plan, we know we have our goals posted across the school. That's the work that we do. There's, we look at data, we do classroom walkthroughs, we give feedback, we coach. And so it's not as much, you know, a thing now. It's just the processes that we do at Mitchell, that we do within our schools. And we've been very fortunate to have low staff turnover, so the teachers have been there a while. And we just go through the processes. We look at that ninety-day plan. We adjust. As we're finishing our iReady data, our staff members are going to do presentations on what they need after they look at that data, and then we'll take that information back and adjust our ninety-day plan to continue the work that we've been doing. So thank you.
And just to close out, the retention rate of teachers has increased. Our teachers love being in their schools. They feel supported. So I'm going to say thank you to every district leader that has helped and listened to all of those ninety-day plans, to Buffy, how she works with us with data, and to, I know that that deputy, I like to call him Deputy Luke at home, but Deputy Clamp, Superintendent, has really listened to the work and understands it and has been super supportive. And also to Superintendent Huggins for being there and allowing us to have some room to wiggle and do something differently. One of the things I do want to say is that high-quality instructional materials was a concern when we first came, and that was the birth of EL. But I'm so glad that our district continued to have high-quality instructional materials. But I'm so glad that our district continued to have high-quality instructional materials with CKLA. And so it was an easy move for the teachers to go from EL to CKLA, which are two of the top curriculums in this country. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for your leadership, Ms. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Gorbowski.
As per our board policy and Robert's rules, the agenda distinguishes between action items, which require debate, and information items, which are presented to the board for awareness. So, you know, moving forward, because we have so many information items, I'm going to ask my fellow board members to direct your questions to the superintendent and let the superintendent make her, you know, decision on whether, you know, the response is something that one of the staff members that presented can give or it's something that she can address more efficiently at a board brief. Because as you all are aware, there are nine of us. So if we've got information items, this could go on for twenty, thirty hours. So I would just ask my fellow board members, you know, when I ask you, if you could just direct them to Ms. Huggins and then Ms. Huggins.
Sure.
Please. Are there any questions? I'm Ms. Temple. Dr. Temple.
I just want to say something. I spent time this weekend at the School Boards Association. And one of the things that we did talk about was student achievement. And one of the key factors here that they highlighted was the fact that the retention of teachers was so important to maintaining and keeping the culture of the school. And so I think that, you know, with the acceleration of schools, being able to keep their teachers and leaders, that that's really important because now you have cohesion. You have expectations. You're not retraining everybody every year. So I think that that's a real compliment there that we're retaining the teachers in these schools.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. I think you're spot on and you hit on leaders. I mean, a high-quality principal is a key lever to school turnaround. So we're glad that we've been able to maintain a lot of these leaders in these schools.
Any other questions, Mr. Honigstein?
Quick comment, a compliment to our superintendent. I want to thank you the other day for allowing me to lend your staff to me for a good, fulfilled session. I want to also thank Vanessa and Sonya for sitting with me in that particular session. How much of this, you're only going to go upward, I see that. But a lot of us, I learned the other day with the homelessness situation with students, families, and also the chronic absenteeism within my district. How are you planning to address that? Because once those areas are tweaked, I know what we talked about and I'm going to challenge y'all in the particular area and hopefully we get some results out of that. But how, from you, how you, your aspect or your opinion on that particular area of improving that?
It's a great question, Mr. Hollenshade. We know that chronic absenteeism negatively impacts student performance across the system. And so Dr. Coakley and her team have been charged. This is the second year we've made chronic absenteeism a focus of the district. And Dr. Clamp and the associates have set goals in some of, in some of their schools where chronic absenteeism is particularly high to reduce that rate. I think I've said, suggested in the state of the schools and I've said publicly several times, Janice Malone has seen a reduction in chronic absenteeism over the course of quarters from double digits. And when I say double digits, I mean thirty and forty percent down to nine, ten, eleven percent by her focus and leadership alone. So Dr. Coakley, could you, I think you're back there. I think I saw you. Could you, would you mind coming to the mic and giving a ninety-second overview, if that's possible, of what you've done with the touchdown for attendance, et cetera, just this semester alone? And how you've seen those rates increase to address Mr. Hollenshade's thoughtful question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much and good evening. So we are launching several different campaigns throughout the school year, which is actually an expansion from what we started last year around chronic absenteeism. Last week, we went on a caravan tour for eight schools that actually met the chronic absenteeism rate of ninety-five percent or higher for their students to be in school. They were all acknowledged with signed autograph footfalls from district leaders within the district, as well as members in school support, student support services. And we talked with the students about the purpose of the attendance. So you guys will see more information come out from there. We've also, I'll share this news tonight, that we launched a partnership with Starbucks, who is actually going out to do refreshers, not only for our students, but also our teachers, because we started some conversations around teacher wellbeing, making sure teachers are present at school. So you guys will see more information coming out about community partnerships that deal with it. But really talking about your statement on homelessness, and I'm going to end this in about ten seconds. When we talk about homelessness or displaced families, we really have to talk about what do we do with those scholars when they're not able to make it to school? And so Ms. Denny and I had a really brief conversation about being innovative around what attendance should look like when those scholars can't make it, making sure that those scholars have access to Chromebooks, devices, so they're still able to get in. So we have a lot of work to do around displaced families, but making sure they still have access to a learning device if they're not able to make it at school, but make sure they have a place to actually be.
Thank you, Dr. Coakley. And Mr. Hollenshade, we're having to get really creative. In some schools, we've started incentivizing parents. So it's just, this is a national challenge and we're trying to overcome it head-on here in the district.
Well, I appreciate your comments on that and your staff's response to that. I thank Ms. Jones, Ms. Denny, McKinnon. I heard you're a big advocate in this area too, but it really caught me off guard of a student in West Ashley area that family was living in a container. Kind of caught me off guard when I heard that story. And so I think we're going to do what I can to bring more awareness to this and to try to work on, I guess, within a two or three-year period of time, to come with some creative ways of strengthening that area.
Absolutely.
Because it does affect the achievement gap and, you know, it hurts everybody.
It sure does. You're spot on with that, Mr. Hollenshade. And we appreciate the board's efforts to support homelessness. This holiday season, Mrs. Mills has led a campaign to collect holiday gifts for nearly three hundred families that are homeless here in Charleston. It is heartbreaking and something we certainly have to overcome if we're going to elevate achievement of all.
Any other questions to the superintendent regarding her report? Ms. Jewett?
One comment. Have you guys considered, and I've mentioned it to the staff, but have you considered looping? With having these teachers, the retention of the teachers, I think a lot of times if you start plateauing or you start seeing that, you know, you're not increasing. One really great way that has been studied and has had a lot of success is having your teachers loop and go move with your students, especially with the ML learners and that sort of thing. So.
Thank you, Ms. Jewett. That's a great suggestion. We have seen that in different places across the system. We haven't utilized it as a system-wide approach. Jackie, have you all utilized that? Would you talk a little bit about where you've done that in the Acceleration Zone?
We are currently looping at Shakora Elementary School, where the third-grade teacher has gone to fourth and now in fifth. So those practices are being done in some of our schools. So looping is amazing and the students don't have to learn that teacher all over again and they know the expectations when they walk in the room. So that is happening at Shakora Elementary.
Great. Thank you.
It's happening in other spots as well, Ms. Jewett, but we're looking at it specifically how it positively impacts students of poverty.
Thank you.
Ms. Watley?
Ms. Huggins?
Yes, ma'am.
Over the, let's see, this was from the twenty-two to twenty-four, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
The, 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 moving the needle in the right direction?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm assuming this starts with K and then goes through five?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the plan to sustain it so that the numbers don't dip back down?
That's a great question, Mrs. Watley. So it goes back to those high-leverage strategies that Jackie identified earlier. First of all, working with Ms. Simmons to ensure that we maintain a high-quality curriculum for students, that we continue to do the PLCs like we've talked about, to ensure that the infrastructure is there, the ninety-day plans. And really, it goes back to that continuous improvement process and setting goals, monitoring student achievement and ensuring that teachers have the resources they need and schools have the resources they need to make those quick adjustments sooner than thirty days, like we said earlier. If you wait sixty days, a whole, a quarter's passed. So we have to make really quick adjustments in classrooms, particularly where there are students who have greater needs to ensure their needs are addressed. But we believe access to a high-quality curriculum, consistently monitoring principals being in those classrooms, and most importantly, that mindset that all kids can and all kids will. Thank you for the question.
Dr. Temple?
Yes, I wanted to actually extend accolades to the district for the attention they did give to our homeless students, some four hundred students. George and I were thrilled to go out and shop. And we were thrilled when we brought our gifts here to see the myriad of gifts and then to learn that other community partners had pitched in. I think the Salvation Army had ensured that every child got a gift. So the attention that you all paid to those homeless students at this time of year is wonderful. And I thank you for that, for caring.
Thank you. The credit is due to Mrs. Mills and her team who led that effort and so many generous hearts seated behind me and to my left and right. So thank you, Dr. Temple, and thank you and George for your continued support of kids. And several other trustees who gave generously.
I have a carload. I know you do. I want to go to call names, but yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Gorbowski. My question is quick. I had a community member reach out to me last week and I may have spoken with you. I know I spoke with Mr. Gorbowski and Ms. McKinnon about it. Since this theme is coming up with the homeless children, how are we defining homeless? Are we defining it by a child that lives in a tent or a container or under the overpass? Are we defining it by a child that resides at a relative's house?
Ms., Dr. Coakley, do you want, Dr. Coakley, your seat's way up here, ma'am. You're in the back today.
I'm in the back because I have to do virtual. I'm going to give this to you in ten seconds. So homelessness means displacement. Displacement can mean a variety of things. This could be a student who is being temporarily displaced to long-term displacement. Ms. Sonya Jones' office really works hard to identify the needs and the areas of support and strength that we could provide to determine if that student meets the qualification under McKinnon-Vento. If the student doesn't meet the qualification of McKinnon-Vento, we still look at Children in Crisis funds and a variety of other things that we can do to support the families.
And so just actually, I've got to go here. What are, are we tapping into HUD or FEMA or any of these other federal organizations to help with housing?
We are tapping into a plethora of resources when it comes to what's needed. DSS, Children in Crisis, which is right here in Charleston County, Navigation Center. We have communities and schools that also work with our families to see what other resources can be provided. Our local utility places also provide assistance. So we really check each family to see what resources have already been accessed and then what remains that we could provide those support services for.
You know, there's a lot of land on Jenkins Orphanage at that location that we continue to discuss.
I've been speaking over that land for a while now.
If we can move on, what I'd like to do, I really, I would like to move on.
I know, just two seconds. Just to you. As we get toward, working toward the budget, we're going to have to take a serious look at expanding Sonya's area. And also, as we learned, I learned the other day, in transportation for those students that are displaced by law, we have to make sure they get to school. So those are areas that we need to pay strong attention to when we're working on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Hollenshade.
Two seconds. Strategic education, student outcomes on to five A. The Blue Ribbon Committee update.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for that. In the area of strategic ed, I want to thank Ms. Bailey again for her service and welcome Mrs. Lieber to this work. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Applesheimer and Mr. Barrowey to give a quick overview. As we promised, we're coming to you after a lot of work with the Blue Ribbon Committee out in District One and Two to think about the work there post-closure of Lincoln Middle High School. So Dr. Applesheimer, thank you for your leadership in this area. Mr. Barrowey, same for you. I'll turn it over to you to give a brief overview of our work and where we are now, dot rep.
Got you. Thank you. Chair Gorbowski and Vice Chairman McKinnon and board members, we come to you today to just let you know where we are as far as the Blue Ribbon Committee and the work that we've done, as Superintendent Huggins just said. So, Mr. Barrowey, if you'll just give the background of where we, where we are.
I get the background side since I've lived it. So going back to the 2015-16 school year, where Lincoln Middle High School had one hundred and fifty-six students throughout that six-through-twelve campus. It was decided by the Board of Trustees to close that. You can see the reason why it was closed there. It was to give our students a better opportunity in a location where more programs were offered, providing them the support they need to increase achievement. The board followed up with us to say, hey, keep an eye on demographics. Let's see how many kids we got out in the area and what we expect to have out in the area to try to get to a point where we can build a school for five hundred students, either middle and/or high school. That presentation was provided in the, in that timeframe, August of 2016, and there wasn't a need at that point. For the next four years, from seventeen to twenty-one, we pursued an opportunity to buy property closer to the Population Center, still within closer proximity to those that live in the northern end of the county. And after a long, long search, we identified a parcel which was purchased in December of 2021, a very rare opportunity of a hundred dry acres right on Highway Seventeen, almost halfway between Wando High School and Lincoln High School. Following that, when we realized that the demographics was still lacking to provide enough, enough kids to create a viable opportunity, we created the Blue Ribbon Committee modeled after, modeled after the committee that was developed, which ultimately determined the construction of Lucy Beckham back in the day. That committee assembled back in 2014, 2013 timeframe. But the Blue Ribbon Committee was formed and Dr. Applesheimer took it from there.
Okay. Next slide, please. Okay, the committee overview here. Our purpose is to evaluate and recommend magnet school options and develop a timeline and action plan and prepare a recommendation brief for the board. We have about twenty-three active members on this committee and it is made up of educators, principals, administrators, parents, chairpeople, PTSO members, parents of students and principals, assistant principals, and teachers from the District One and District Two schools. Next slide, Maggie. We've done two surveys. The first one we did in May of 2023. We had seven hundred and forty-three total responses to that survey. We had only fifty-six from D1 and we had six hundred and eighty-seven from D2. Now, it's important to note on this first survey, we only surveyed District One and District Two. This was the, this is the way the Blue Ribbon Committee wanted to go. So in order for us to give, we went back to the Blue Ribbon Committee, presented the results. And again, we did not get enough interest for that five hundred magical number for either a five hundred student middle school or a five hundred student high school. So we decided to develop a second survey that we sent out in January of 2024. We got eight hundred and seventy-two responses from across CCSD and we included all constituent districts. But this was for any, any parent, these were sent to any parent of a student who was enrolled in child development up to twelfth grade in CCSD. The highest magnet focus areas included. After we went on a trip to look at magnet programs and what was working in other states, particularly Bridgeport, Connecticut, we came back and added this question to the survey. And the most interest, the focus of most interest was agriculture, IT, information technology, and then aquaculture. There were only, of those eight hundred and seventy-two, there were only five hundred and seventy-two who were extremely interested or interested. And I broke that down further to say there were three hundred and twenty-nine parents that were extremely interested and then there were two hundred and forty-three that were interested. Next slide, Maggie. And I'm going to ask Ms. Heather Suter to come up and talk to you about the demographic study and the insights there.
Good evening. I'm Heather Suter.
I'm Heather Suter, the Interim Director of Planning and Real Estate. One of the major things that our department handles is the enrollment projection process. And there are a lot of factors that we take into consideration when we look at projecting enrollment for our schools. Some of those factors that have played a specific role in this for D1 and D2 is the housing market and cost of living. The median home prices in North Mount Pleasant have increased by sixty percent since 2019, which is close to a million dollars per home. There's also limited growth in Ondaw due to septic limitations and a building moratorium. There is also varied growth in North Mount Pleasant, but it's nothing like what we've historically seen out that way. Because of all of these factors, back in 2016, when projections were created then, ten years out, we did not foresee what was going to happen with the housing market and the pandemic and a number of other factors. So our projections, the enrollment has not met where our projections were at in 2016. And related to enrollment now, we have seen notably a decrease in D2's enrollment by about four hundred students from last year to this year. We've also seen a decrease in D1's number of students. Right now, currently for projections out to FY30, we are still seeing a projected decrease in enrollment for D1 and D2.
Dirty day, I thank you, Maggie. Okay, and the challenges that we've come across with these, the community feedback, rezoning and accessibility, community engagement, and facilities and different programs. Those were the challenges. Next slide, Maggie. As for our next steps, our committee actions are to continue meeting, continue holdings, quarterly meetings to review our progress, and then continue demographic studies to monitor D1 growth. Our focus areas right now, feasibility of a five hundred student magnet middle high school, community engagement, and updates. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Epp, Mr. Grabowski.
Any question with the board to Superintendent regarding this information?
I have two questions.
Miss Stewart.
Is there a way to get more detailed information? I mean, D1, D2, it's a very, very large district, so there's a lot of schools in there. It, you know, it's very broad as far as the information you're giving. Can we get like a more detailed, kind of demographic, especially this?
We have, we have that, ma'am. We chose in the interest of time.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we will provide it this Friday.
It's my district. I'd like to see more detail.
Miss Stewart, we'll break that down and send it this week so you can see where everybody is and what areas and, yes, ma'am.
You know, where the increases are. The other question was, how are these communications sent and when? Because I'm a parent in D2, and I, I might have filled this out, but I might not have. And I'm just wondering, I don't remember.
Okay, it's sent out from CCSD. That's the only, you know, we use Power School and we use the, and that's, it's so important to make sure that Power School, the email addresses are there. And we, we have, especially in D1, and I have met with D1 and D2 constituent districts, each one of those, and presented the information in a more detailed setting. We have also had Superintendent Huggins scheduled a community meeting because D1, constituent district D1, wanted more information, and they wanted to hear from district members as well as me and as well as other members of the Blue Ribbon Committee. So we presented back in October, on October the eighth, I believe.
We did. Dr. Epp, will you let the board know what you did to make sure you were hearing from District One, given some of the unique challenges out there with technology?
Yes, with the first survey, D1 only had, you heard me say, fifty-six responses. And when we came back as a committee, and I went to the D1 meetings, and Kim Foxworth is a liaison there for us, and she, she's right there by my side, so I got to give her a shout out. But when we went out to D1, the concerns that that constituent board had were that people weren't getting the information. They didn't hear about it. So with the second survey, what we start, what we did is we opened the school, St. James Santie, with the help from La Karma McMillan, she's on the committee as well. And we opened up the school so that parents could come into the school and do the survey there with somebody who could help them, guide them through the electronics, the technology. We also sent home flyers in students' backpacks to let them know the second survey was coming. Look for it. One of our members, Reverend Milligan, spoke to the churches in the community in D1 to let them know this is coming. And even some of the churches opened their doors to people to come in to do the survey.
Thank you, Dr. Epp.
Thank you.
Miss Stewart, we'll get that information out this week.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I have just, just two questions. And one is, obviously, we've purchased the property, and under the very state guidelines, we have a certain amount of time to start pushing forth on our plans. So what are we doing to protect those guidelines? Because it sounds like this process may exceed the limitations of what the state.
Thank you for that great question, Mr. Burrowey.
So the zoning approval we received was through a planned use development, so there is no guideline for when the ground has to be turned out there. That's number one. Number two, we are required to report underutilized property to the state. And all we have to, all we're required to do is to provide a plan for that property, and we'll continue to provide it like we do other underutilized properties.
Excellent.
Yes, sir.
Second question, Oceanside concept came up when? Was it 2017 or 2018? It was after this.
Seventeen.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it was 2017. So how are we taking into account? I mean, I know our numbers are down, but it seems like Oceanside's numbers are up.
What you have to look at there, if I may take this.
Sure, please, yes.
What you have to look at there is the students that go to Oceanside are not all from District Two and District One. They come from all over. And you also have students going out to magnet schools like Academic Magnet and like School of the Arts. And some may even go as far as to go to James Allen Charter High School. And what you also have to consider in these numbers is you already have students who live in D1 who are attending, who are attending Mount Pleasant Schools. And I'm not just talking about Wando because, you know, there's nowhere else for the children to go. If they're zoned, if they were zoned for Lincoln, they come straight to Wando for better opportunities. But you have students that are going to elementary schools in D2.
But we also have the Charter School in McCollinville, which is growing. So, I mean, I hear the numbers are coming down, but at the same time, because of not really understanding the demographics of both, and I know the Charter School out in McCollinville, where they're drawing their kids obviously from. But I just, and this, the concept of a middle high school, middle school, high school, I mean, to get to the five hundred, that's something that's being considered where we would combine both the high school or it'd be one or the other?
One or the other.
Okay, so there's no way we could ever consider doing a magnet school that would have a step up?
Well, you're looking at, you're looking at situations where we have now where you don't, you know, you can, you can only offer certain things with a certain amount of students, and they don't have those opportunities. I mean, let's just be honest.
And the only reason I'm asking that, thinking out of the box, is that maybe at some point later on down the road, an answer for some of our other schools where we're struggling to have two hundred students, three hundred students, and if you could somehow, and not whether it's possible or not, but combine it towards you had a middle school, high school, so that you could get the resources in there that the larger number of school, the student populations bring.
I promise you, this committee is doing everything it can possibly do to get that five hundred number. We are, we are, like I said, we have even thrown out putting a swimming pool. That went out in the first survey, and that would serve the community as well as, as the school system. We don't have a school that has a, has a swimming pool. They weren't interested.
Yeah, I think that's important. Dr. Applesheimer, I appreciate you bringing it up. I do want the public to know and the board that this administration and team, we are deeply committed to the District One area, to the families there. And we've tried about everything in regards to thinking even outside of the box. And why don't we build a magnet? And they will come. We threw out another academic magnet, for example, the sports magnet. You name it, we talked about it. And the top feedback we got, as Dr. Epp explained, was to create a agriculture magnet out in District One, but we still don't have the commitment of enough students and our families because the population that exists simply is not enough. So we were thinking if we build it, they might, students might be attracted to it. But what's important for this board to know is we have stronger neighborhood schools than we ever have before. More and more of our students are staying in their neighborhood schools for the first time. We've exhausted the waiting list at Academic Magnet. More and more students are staying at West Ashley High School, at Lucy Beckham High School, at high schools across the district. And so that's a, a good, a good thing that's happening. At the same time, it doesn't necessarily bode well to build another magnet school in District One. So thank you, Dr. Epp. Thank you, Mr. Grabowski.
Any other questions of the superintendent?
I think, I think briefly, what happened, I think you're talking about the property we purchased out there in Ondaw, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And see, back then, when we purchased that property, they were supposed to be slated for some developments that were going to happen. I think Jeff can tell you those developments never did in six years. So that kind of also contributed to the.
I've seen the Ondaw master plan, and, you know, all it takes is one water line. And it's going to explode. Now, whether we can keep it like watermelon, but all it takes is one water line.
Hey, Mr. Grabowski, just so you know, in regards to middle school, there are only right now forty-six middle school students. A lot of your questions were about combo. Forty-six middle school students at St. James Santie, which is our combo.
Yeah.
I, I have one question.
Ms. Lieber.
So being on the edge of the wilderness, as Ms. Roberson probably is too. Yes, oh, one of the things that I've kind of thought about in the solutions for this, and to reduce that number below five hundred, was is there churches that have a school capacity that, I know there's some facility issues, but can you put those students at the church and then possibly provide additional resources that they're not getting right now?
Well, I, I'll just comment on the facility side, and we've struggled during COVID. We looked at trying to do that, and it's extremely hard to ensure that a church has met the Office of School Facility requirement. So you are correct, facilities is a big challenge. I don't, I don't want to go too far into something that's out of my swim lane regarding academics, but I would suspect that the same problems we had with Lincoln would be the same problems we would have at any other facility out there with a small number of students, is be able to provide those offerings for them that we couldn't do at Lincoln.
Thank you.
Moving on to item five B, Ms. Huggins, in looking at this, is this motion, you know, to keep consistent with our, you know, we wouldn't be doing an action. Are you under a time constraint to have this approved at this meeting?
We could wait till January if the board, that's the rule of the board.
Keep it consistent.
I think last year.
Any objections from any board members on that? That I'd like to make a motion that we move to consider to approve the Continuous Improvement Plan Components for the Submitted School Renewal Plans for State Identified Underperforming Schools at the next board meeting in January.
Does it interfere with the schools?
That's what I asked.
Money or whatever?
It, it would, it would run us right up to the deadline of reporting. So I think, I think you all decided if something needed public input that you, that you considered on the same night, you would delay. It would put us up to the deadline, but it's something we can run up against the deadline on.
But we've also taken what Dr. Temple just said into account. If there was something that you felt had to be, and I don't want to call a special meeting on this, that's for sure. I mean, if the board members are satisfied with the discussion and the investigation, I'll withdraw my motion, and then we'll just put it up to vote.
We could get our funding a little bit sooner if you would consider approving, but I don't.
I will withdraw my motion, and I will, the question before the board is a motion to approve Continuous Improvement Plans Components for the Submitted School Renewal Plans for State Identified Underperforming Schools. Are there any? Now that it's been seconded, any questions by board members in favor or against? Hearing none, I will close it, and we'll bring the question up for vote.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. That makes Mr. Prentice very happy down there. Right, Mr. Prentice?
Thank the board.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. On to item six A, the question for the board is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution. Do I have a second? Having a second, I will open up the floor for any debate on the motion. Is there any debate, any? Hearing none, I'll bring the motion up for a vote. And the motion passes. On to item six B, which is a motion to, the question before the board is a motion to advance to the December ninth.
This is the reallocation from the various schools to James B. Edwards. The motion. Yeah, we can change the motion. I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Ms. Wiley, could you please make the motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to reallocate the excess funds from various schools to James B. Edwards.
That was the last.
No, the, the first one should have been the D4 track. But we've got to approve all the reallocation on the resolution. Do you want to help me with the wording?
This, this is a reallocation from several school projects to the D4 Stadium project in the amount of $2,500,001.
So the first one that we did was the D4 track?
The first one was the Frierson, James B. Edwards, and.
James Allen Charter.
James Allen Charter High School. They were just flipped.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm, I'm, I got caught. I didn't actually read the motion that we just approved of the resolution.
Yeah, it doesn't have detailed information.
So can we, can we let that first motion, Ms. Trudy, reflect the, the difference? The first one, Mr. Prentice, can you help Ms. Trudy with the wording of the first motion?
Right.
Right.
And that's what I was going to say for this one, too.
For the, the second one, it was the Cal agenda item, I think, that carried over. And so that should just be the exact same motion as the first one pertaining to the attachment on B.
Correct.
But you don't want to specify? No.
No, it's just the attachment.
It just references the attachment.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Second.
Having a second, any questions for debate? Hearing none, I'll bring the motion up for vote. And the motion passes. On to item six C, which is an information item regarding procurements over $250,000 report, which was discussed at Autumn Finance and at Cal. Are there any further questions from the board regarding this? On to item six D, which is an Esser update, which once again was discussed at Autumn Finance and at Cal. And as I think this is one that's being carried over to the next Cal meeting. So hearing the questions, we'll move on to item six E, which is the. Um, so hearing the questions, we'll move on to item six E, which is the financial audit results. And as I understand from Ms. Watley, we have someone for the information on the presentation.
Yes, sir. We've got, um, we've got Ms., um,
Sobchak.
Sobchak. She's going to come in, uh, present for us to the board. Ms. Sobchak, please come forward.
Good evening. I'll let them pull up the presentation for you. My name is Emily Sobchak, and I'm here to present the results of the financial statement audit for Charleston County School District for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Before we get into those results, I do think it's important for you as board members to remember that you do have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that you're staying engaged in the district's financial condition and that when you're receiving financial information, you're reviewing that and asking questions when things don't make sense. The, the, the district's financial information that's included in the audit report is, of course, the responsibility of the district. And so it's very important that you have good policies and procedures in place to ensure that that financial information is materially correct. And that's important at year end for audit purposes. But also as you're making decisions throughout the year, you want to be able to rely on that information. Our responsibility as your auditor is to audit the financial information provided and issue an opinion based on our audit. Our opinion is an unmodified opinion again this year. That opinion provides reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. Um, so it's important to remember that reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute. We're not looking at every single transaction that occurred during the year, and we're also using materiality in determining our audit procedures. So now we'll look at your general fund results. You had an increase in fund balance of forty-four point six million, bringing total fund balance for the general fund to two hundred and thirty point nine million as of June thirtieth. Included in that two hundred and thirty million is non-spendable fund balance, um, of about eleven point nine million. Uh, it's classified as non-spendable because it's truly no longer in spendable form. Those funds have been expended, uh, for primarily for prepayments on insurance premiums. And so while the payments were made in fiscal twenty-four, the expenses will be recognized in fiscal twenty-five. We also have committed fund balance of ninety-four point eight million. Those are for your operating reserves as well as some Esser stabilization. Those commitments were made through formal action by the board and can only be released through similar formal action. And then we have assigned fund balance of fifty-two point five million. That includes of, um, your fiscal twenty-five budget appropriations as well as some additional Esser stabilization funding. And then after we take out those designations, we're left with unassigned fund balance of seventy-one point seven million. That represents eight and a half percent of your budgeted fiscal twenty-five expenditures. Um, and so as you can see, that is in line with the board's policy. Um, your fund balance policy maintains minimum fund balance reserves partly in your committed fund balance and then also in your unassigned fund balance. So we want unassigned to be no less than, uh, four point two percent, about half a month of your operating expenditures. Um, but there are a number of reasons why it's important to, number one, maintain that fund balance, but also to continue to grow that fund balance. One very important factor is your cash flows. We are measuring fund balance at June thirtieth. But of course, you've got about six months of cash flows to get through before your most significant revenue source, your property tax revenues start coming in. And so having that fund balance allows you to minimize your reliance on short-term financing to fund operations. Um, and so in the past, the district has used a tax anticipation note. And as you continue to grow your fund balance, again, you can, uh, reduce the amount of that tan um, and hopefully get to a point where you're not having to issue one at all, because of course that does save you in interest costs. Um, having the fund balance available also allows you to navigate unanticipated expenditures and also gives you more flexibility in choosing the services that you're providing, um, given fluctuations in your funding sources. So looking at your general fund revenues, revenues totaled seven hundred and thirty-four million for the year. That was about an eleven percent increase from the prior year, as you did see increases in your property tax revenues as well as your state revenues. Revenues came in about eight percent higher than what you had budgeted. Um, and that was primarily, again, due to your property tax revenues coming in higher due to increases in your assessed values. In addition to your operating revenues, we also report transfers in. Those are transfers from other funds primarily related to indirect cost funding. Looking at your expenditures, you have general fund expenditures of seven hundred and eight million for the year. That was about a nine percent increase from the prior year, and no surprise, that increase was primarily driven by increases in your personnel costs, um, as you continue to give those, um, salary increases. You also saw increased fringe benefit costs as well. And as you can see, their expenditure is very close to what you had budgeted, um, just about one percent below your budget. Next, we look at your total revenues and expenditures for all of your funds combined. So in addition to your general fund, we're adding on your special revenue and EIA funds, food service, debt service, and capital projects, and we're looking at total operations, total revenues and net, net other financing sources of one point three billion, um, compared to expenditures of one point two billion. So next we'll look at some of your long-term assets and obligations. As you'll recall, when we look at your fund level reporting, we're focused on current assets and current liabilities, but we do also have your government-wide financial statements that include long-term assets and obligations. So your capital assets totaled one point seven billion as of June thirtieth. That was an increase of nearly forty-five million compared to the prior year as your additions exceeded your depreciation and disposals. Looking next at your long-term debt, we have total long-term obligations of four hundred and eleven point three million. That was a decrease of thirty-five million from the prior year, um, as you have principal payments made as scheduled. You also issued two, um, uh, two bond issuances. Uh, first, your forty million dollar general obligation bonds. And then you also issued some CEIF refunding bonds to refund, um, some previous, previously issued debt uh, to achieve lower interest rates and reduce your debt service payments. A couple of other long-term obligations, um, that we'll briefly discuss are your net pension and OPEB liabilities. These liabilities, um, are not direct liabilities of the district. Rather, they represent your proportionate share of the total unfunded actuarial liabilities of the state retirement system and the state retiree healthcare plan. Um, these liabilities are estimates. Um, and so while they are significant, uh, it's more important to focus on what is directly impacting, impacting your cash flows and your operating budgets. And that is the cost of your employer contributions. Um, those are at rates mandated by the state, and those rates have been increasing steadily over the years. Your state retirement system rate for fiscal twenty-four was eighteen and a half percent. That was an increase of one percent compared to the prior year. Um, we do expect that rate to hold at eighteen and a half percent for the foreseeable future. So that, of course, has a significant impact on your budget, and it's very important that you're keeping in mind the, um, the cost of fringe benefits when you're making personnel decisions because they are significant. So in addition to your financial statement audit, we also do the district's single audit. That's the additional compliance require, compliance audit required by the federal government, um, related to your federal expenditures, and it focuses specifically on your major federal programs. This year, we audited two programs. We audited IDEA, and we also audited Esser. Um, related to the Esser audit, we did have one finding related to procurement. Um, the federal government does not allow the use of local exemptions when procuring goods and services with federal funds. And so we did identify where there were some instances that the district was continuing to use local exemptions for federal Esser procurements. Um, we also had one finding related to the financial statement audit, and that was related to financial closeout. The financial closeout, um, took a little bit longer this year than normal. And we were having to make a significant number of journal entries during the audit process compared to what we normally would. Um, some of those entries were originated by the district. Others were identified through audit procedures. Um, and I know that the district has a plan in place to ensure that that's not a problem going forward. Uh, we also issue a management letter each year. That's, um, primarily required communications from us as your auditor to the board and to management. We also include, um, written recommendations in the management letter. So things that we want you to be aware of that don't qualify as findings in your report. And so we continue to highlight the pupil activity funds. Those are the funds that are coming in through the schools. Um, because it is a disaggregated cash-receiving process, you have funds coming in for things like field trips in the classrooms. It's important to understand that while those dollars may not be significant to the district, there is still some risk there. Um, so continuing to, um, uh, address that and, uh, monitor, um, those people activity funds is important. I'm now happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, and I will open up the floor from questions. I would, I appreciate if you ask them or direct them to Mr. Prentice because I think in your questions, he'll be able to, eh, probably respond to what the district is doing in regards to the audit and the findings. Ms. Watley?
Which leads exactly into two things that I would like to point out to the board. Um, going back to, uh, slide number two, and then also I'm going to go to slide number eight, I believe. Hold on one second. Yes. Slide two and slide eight. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Prentice. So on slide two, on the opinion piece, which also ties into that, the final thing that she said where she found the deficiencies. Um, if we go back, which I believe we're up for their second reading tonight, the board, the policies that, um, we worked on with Mr. Prentice for to supply those, um, safeguards and guardrails to protect from future abuses. Um, and then also on slide eight, uh, for the new board members. Um, Mr. Prentice supplied for us a, a PowerPoint presentation. As we're going into this budget cycle, it'll come back up. Um, but our last budget cycle, he gave us a, a slide about how he was projecting to balance our budget over the next few years to keep from having a tax increase or millage increase. And so that's slide number eight, that information where, um, we had, uh, uh, we, we collected more revenues than, um, than we had initially thought we were going to get. So that he's, um, applied that portion of monies towards, um, balancing the, the budget. So with that, I just wanted to make sure that you highlight those. Thanks, Mr. Prentice. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so to the first point about policies, there are ten financial policies on the agenda this evening for final action. Uh, those follow the three policies that were previously updated by the board in the last several months. Uh, so our goal is going to be to go through those D policies predominantly every year and make relevant updates to keep everything aligned with best practices. Uh, as Ms. Watley mentioned, during the budget process, we started the development of a five-year financial plan and also worked closely with the county to forecast, um, our revenues for the year. And so our, our early indicators for this fiscal year appear that we're going to be within one percent of what we budgeted in terms of our actual. So you saw that number that Ms. Sobchak pointed out coming in, uh, in excess of twelve percent over budget with property taxes. We want to make sure that those numbers are much tighter in terms of our budget to actual each year. And then the last point, um, in terms of the, uh, other risk assessment items, we have three of our internal audits currently underway based on the internal audit plan that was approved by the board. So now that we have that plan approved, uh, we're able to go through those, uh, internal audits systematically throughout the year, and we'll ensure that those are kept up to date. This will be the first time uh, that we've had an internal audit plan implemented in the last several years. So looking forward to beginning to keep up with that on a regular basis now.
Anything else, Ms. Watley?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for any other board members?
I have one quick question.
Mr. Hollings said.
And that ninety-four million reserve fund balance, that is what you talked about, the operation of six months worth of reserve?
So that is actually, that's the committed fund balance and, um, that the actions of the board through this budget process, we are projecting to use some fund balance over the next several years to balance the budget as we begin to step out of that use of fund balance and use recurring revenues to balance each year. So those will show up as committed, and that amount will decrease little by little every year, uh, as we get to that optimal point in FY twenty-nine.
Okay. And then as you explained to me the other day, when you use funds to balance off the teachers' ex, revenue, uh, increase, that didn't come from there though, right? Or what that came, you told me it came from the reserve fund balance though, right?
So the assigned fund balance is the number below that, the fifty-two and a half million. That's the amount that was budgeted this year to balance the FY twenty-five budget. Part of that was the support for the weighted student funding implementation, and then the other part supported the teacher salary increases. Yes, sir.
Got you. Okay. When we were over, you, you would say there was excess money in the reserve balance which you transferred out.
Yes, sir. The, the fund balance was approximately double the, um, board's policy requirement, which is double the state's requirement. And so our goal was just to start to use a little bit of that fund balance as our revenues were increasing pretty substantially, um, to ensure that we were balancing a mixture of millage increase against use of fund balance and trying to be as, as sustainable as possible.
Thank you.
I think now you have to do a monthly reporting to the state of how much money this is in the fund balance with.
We do. Yes, ma'am. There's a, um, proviso that was adopted, so we have to submit a monthly report to the state.
I have a question.
Let's do it.
With the long-term obligations, the four hundred and eleven million, um, what is the rate, interest rate on that? And, and if we're, if we've got that much in loans, why are we giving some of our money to TIPS?
So that, that makes up several, um, outstanding bond issues that were issued over a number of different years. Um, one of which, if you go to the second smaller bullet, the, um, refunding of the CEIF bonds, um, that was a deal that had been issued, I think, in twenty fourteen, and we refinanced it this year. Um, and it yielded approximately, uh, six million dollars in savings as a result of refinancing at a lower interest rate. Um, so those are a mixture of what's called installment purchase revenue bonds that were issued up to around twenty fourteen before the law changed, preventing school districts from issuing those types of deals. Um, and then general obligation bonds, um, which are just part of our eight percent debt limit, which I'm happy to explain that in some greater detail. Um, and that's the type of issue that we issue now, but thanks to the sales tax that was adopted a number of years ago and has now been extended. Uh, I guess this is the, the fifth program, uh, the fourth extension. We've been able to step away from long-term debt, so our goal is to get most of that long-term debt paid off over the next eight years.
So what the thirty-five million is?
That's part, that's part of the decrease is the amount that we've been paying off. So we've been paying off more than we've been issuing. Um, so in the early twenty thirties, we should have most of our long-term debt gone, and we should just have, um, short-term debt, which would be issues that we, um, advance to be able to get projects underway, kind of early out funding, and then we pay off the following year. And, and anything that's issued, uh, by CCSD by and large is going out with the public market. Um, so we're going out, uh, and selecting the lowest bid from an interest rate standpoint and using our financial advisors' resources, um, to be able to get that out on the market.
Okay. Yeah.
Mr. Cabowski.
Ms. Roberson.
I just want to say thank you for the finding of the exemptions because we were concerned about the use of. So it's good to know that, um, it came up. So, um, are, are we going to get this in a, um, binder with the management letters?
Yeah, it's on the website as of yesterday, I believe, and we included it in the, uh, board docs item just for reference, but we will have printed copies as well.
And, and I have to say, yeah, you know, Mr. Prentice, um, when, on the fund balance discussion, both of you did a wonderful job considering some of the committee members and their opinions on fund balances. And for the first time, I think it's, they didn't raise a concern on our fund balance and thought we were doing the right direction. So I, I think the board needs to know that, uh, the committee is a very good committee. And so that, that's quite a feather in your caps to be able to get them to agree. I am still a little concerned, and I agree with Ms. Roberson because Ms. Roberson was part of this argument for a long time. If you could clarify this Esser exemption issue a little further. I, I know we even had some committee members that, and I agree with them, once we lose one dollar of unreimbursed money, um, the amount was pretty significant. So.
So hit on your first point real quick. Um, we actually received, um, Moody's rating action associated with one of the bond issues that we did, and they mentioned in their rating letter, uh, the plan that we had for the use of fund balance from a sustainability standpoint is a positive mark. So that was nice to see. Um, but then on the, uh, the Esser issue, you know, that circumstance was discovered, you know, we talked about it during budget reports leading up to this point in time. Uh, a lot of it originated from the, uh, D twenty-three collaborative program, um, with the items that had been exempted um, outside of the federal requirement. You know, our local code exempts anything that's an educational service and a number of other items, but the federal government requires you to compete anything over ten thousand dollars. And you have to get a letter signed by the State Department of Education to exempt that competition, um, if the item is over ten thousand dollars. And so we now have a process in place between procurement and the Office of Federal Programs. Of course, there was staff termination and some other things that happened, uh, leading up to some of these process changes. Um, but we have a process in place now between those offices because we obviously have other federal funds on a recurring basis where that exemption requirement for title and other funding sources is a requirement. So even though Esser is gone, we have something in place to ensure that on a much smaller scale, we're making that, sure that's in check.
And we were able to cover what was about a nine hundred thousand dollar amount that wasn't reimbursed through Esser, but we were able to absorb it into the general operating fund.
So coincidentally, the auditor's testing indicated that it would have been approximately nine hundred thousand dollars in exposure based on the sample that they tested. It actually was right at nine hundred. It actually was right at $900,000 in exposure that we knew because every time we had an exemption issue, we put a special code on it and on our ledger so that we could track it. But because we had other eligible expenditures that were ESER eligible, we swapped. And so we had GOF budgeted expenditures that we covered with ESER and ESER ineligible expenditures that we covered with the GOF money. So there was no net fiscal impact to the district. It was just, you know, a bit of moving things around in journal entries.
And some of these, the remaining audits that are outstanding, not, you know, this is obviously the big, over 30,000 foot level, but some of the internal audits that we're doing now are going down even deeper down.
Internal audits procedurally, and then the State Department's conducting the SR3 FY '24 audit. And then we'll have a small FY '25 ESER audit for the July 1 through September 30 portion of this fiscal year.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Prentice?
I'll just dovetail on what you were just saying. If you go back and watch the Audit and Finance Committee meeting from last week, you'll see that I drilled Mr. Prentice extensively about the issue of fraud. So.
Onto item 6F, the monthly financial report. It was an information item in which we went pretty extensive over the financials. Do you want to say anything, Mr. Prentice?
Nothing to share there in particular. We'll point everyone's attention to the dashboard that's out there for weighted student funding. And we'll have more information in January when we start to see property tax revenues come in on budget actual for the GOF.
Any questions from any of the board members from what they've seen? Excellent. We'll move on to item 6G, which was the monthly capital projects report. Once again, Mr. Prentice, is there anything based upon what you heard from committee or staff?
Nothing to share. I don't believe there were any questions, but happy to answer any, any questions that arise from the board.
If there are no questions, the board will entertain a motion to convene into executive session to consider and receive legal advice as well arrangements, student placement pending, or potential legal, legal claims or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege.
I assume.
All in favor?
All right.
We are in executive session.
We're over there freezing.
Uh, reconvene into um.
I move.
General section.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We are back into general session. So we'll go on to item ten A, which is a student placement appeal. Do I have a motion?
I move to uphold the constituent board decision.
A second.
Please bring it up to vote.
Loving.
Oh man.
I'm leaving.
You got it.
Yeah.
Take our voice for summary.
I got it.
She's got it.
Yeah, it's working.
And the motion passes. Um, on to the second, item ten B, which is a personnel matter. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the report and recommendation of the hearing officer to terminate the employment of employee A.
A second.
Please bring it to vote.
Some reason logged me out. And it's logging me out again.
I say yes.
Let's do it again. Yeah.
And the motion passes on to item eleven A. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Grabowski, um, point of order on a lot of item eleven A, um, we had voted at the Cal to move that to the January board meeting. Um, and my apologies for not calling the point of order when we adopted the agenda. We should have adopted the agenda with the exception of items eleven A.
So we'll just take no action.
Thank you, sir.
That'll come up the next month.
It'll be on next month's board.
So we'll go on to um, item twelve, which is the consent. A jet.
That we adopted.
That's adopted when we adopt the article number thirteen.
Yep. Upcoming meetings. Upcoming meetings.
On to item 13, upcoming meetings. Um, we have had a slight change.
Uh, we, we, uh, passed that with the adoption of the agenda.
Upcoming meetings, we.
Yeah, the dates. Did you write them down?
They're in the, um, item 13.
Hmm, I have a que- I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It relates to policy DFG and this is a policy of about, um, somebody attending our school from out of district. And I like the way it lays out, you know, the payment, but what I didn't see in that policy and maybe it's in, um, the administrative pieces, what happens if the student doesn't pay the tuition income at the first time it's required? Cause it's in increments.
Yeah.
They pay it and then second semester. What happens if they don't pay it?
I might have to defer to general counsel on that one. There are four statutory references, uh, that are referenced at the bottom of that policy that I think would govern the, the non-payment. I can look at those. If, if it's okay with you, maybe we could follow up after the meeting.
Yeah.
On to item 13A, the upcoming meetings, the Cal will be held on January 13th with a board meeting on January 27th.